All right. Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, October 10th, 2023. We are here for the Norfolk Planning Board meeting. It's 7:00 PM. We're here in Town Hall, Room 24, 124, I'm sorry. We do have this meeting is hybrid. It is on Zoom. In accordance with the provision of Master of Law Chapter 38, Section 20, notice was previously provided that tonight's planning board meeting will be held here in Room 124, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass. Alternate public access to this meeting has been provided via Zoom. This information is on the town's website. You can go there and you can find a link to access the meeting this evening. The meeting is also recorded for future rebroadcast by the Norfolk Community Television. For more information about that, please see the town's website. So we will get started. We'll first do kind of a roll call here. We do have our whole board in person, so there will be no need to do roll call votes this evening. And so we'll just kind of go around here. We do have Melissa Mayo, Chris Mountford, myself, Chad Peck, Eric Diamond, Gary Sullivan, our town planner, Richard McCarthy, and our admin assistant, Vezzi Fizol. We do have quite a few people online, and we have a 7 o'clock appointment for the Southwood Hospital presentation with the MAPC. And I believe I did see Josh on there. Yep, there is his happy-looking face. So I will pass this off to Josh. How are you doing this evening, Josh?
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Chad. Thank you, board. Good evening, everyone. Happy to see you all again this evening, presenting on the Southwood work and research we've been have underway as opposed to the master.
We lost audio.
Still having?
Yep. You're back.
Nope.
Hold on.
Hold on one second, Josh.
I'll try.
Okay, is it back now?
Yes.
All right. Very good.
Sorry about that.
So I have, no, no problem. I have an update and presentation to give this evening on the Southwood analysis that we have had underway regarding the scenarios that we've explored and the sort of conclusions that we can draw from those scenarios, and then hope to have a time for discussion and questions and answers following that brief presentation. So I will share my screen and dive right into that work to share with you all. All right, so hopefully you all can see that now?
Yes.
Great. So this, we're picking up again. I think we have not presented to the board in some time on this work. And this, the analysis that we performed on the scenario analysis occurred towards more the beginning of this year, and then we paused and have picked it back up now with the, I think, more interest in turning toward zoning in the near future, but we'll talk about that as we talk about next steps potentially. So in this presentation, we will be talking through community preferences, which we talked talked through and gathered from both a community forum and community survey a little over a year ago. And then the meat of this presentation is in regard to the scenarios, and we'll give an overview of what that was, the analysis that we used, and touch on the methodologies, and then the summary conclusions, and then some reflections as well. And we'll walk you through all of that work. So just to remind us all, the community preferences that were expressed as we talked about Southwood, we had gathered feedback from about 400 participants, residents of Norfolk, residents in the surrounding area, around the Southwood Hospital property, residents from the town at large. That feedback was gathered both at a hybrid workshop with the planning board back in June of 2022, and then also a follow-up survey, which was available for about a month after that time. And we were really focused on trying to understand at that point what the community's preferences were for future reuse of the Southwood Hospital property. And here is a summary of that feedback that was gathered. And you can see this summary is arrayed with uses, and those uses from the top of the page to the bottom. The top is the most appropriate uses that were deemed appropriate from the community's perspective based upon the feedback that we heard through those forums and survey. And the top items were protected open space uses on the property, restaurant uses, retail uses, potentially clean energy production uses. So for example, a solar array. Mixed uses, non-residential ground floor, office and commercial uses, or senior living, assisted living, sort of continuum of care type facilities. And then from there, you can see that the support starts to move away from, those were all above that 60% threshold, which is about where you need to get to for a zoning change at town meeting. And below that point were single-family homes and townhouses, a compact village-style cottage cluster of single-family homes or duplexes or two-family homes, down to light industrial and manufacturing uses, then various scales of multifamily and a warehouse and distribution facility at the bottom of that scale with the largest scale multifamily also at the bottom of the scale. And there was, you know, very, very minor support as you get to the bottom of the scale, say 10% of support from those who were polled or responded, and 88% of those who responded that they did not support those uses. So that was the feedback gathered. We use this feedback to assemble scenarios that were explored, and that's what you'll see through the next series of slides that we'll be going through now. And of course, there, I don't, I didn't include in this presentation a larger, broader step back about the Southwood property, but just to remind everyone that this is a formal, a former hospital property in the town. It has environmental contamination, which is of great concern to the neighbors and the town at large. And that was noted as the primary feature that people would like to see as a part of future uses is that the site be cleaned up and that the contamination be remediated. So that's the broader context here. And this has been a property which has been, has gone through several cycles of redevelopment over the preceding years and decades as well. So in response to this feedback and to give a sort of a broad look at scenarios, we explored 15 different scenarios and also explored different potential development pathways. And the purpose of exploring these scenarios is for us on a, from a planning perspective, to help guide the town toward a nexus of feasibility with the development and property owner team to see if there is a solution that maybe checks some of those boxes from the community feedback, but we also needed to include potential financial feasibility and several other metrics as well, which we'll talk through in detail in this work. So that's just stepping back. That's what this scenarios analysis is really about, is trying to give some technical detail to a way forward that is a neutral, independent third party. It's not coming from the property owner developer team. It's not coming from the town, and we're trying to base that on, as much as we can, data and analysis. So in those 15 scenarios, we also explored development pathways. So that would be the mode by which a development would be approved, whether that be the existing zoning, 40B, of course, which is available to developers in the town and in other municipalities across the Commonwealth. 40R is an option as well. The, or new zoning, which would be contemplated with the town's guidance in terms of what types of characteristics, what are the dimensional regulations, what uses, parking requirements, et cetera, to create a new zone potentially on that property. The scenarios explored variation in both the uses and the scale of those uses and the combination of those uses on the property. So looking at everything from a hospital use to assisted living to senior housing, residential retail, really all of the uses that showed up previously in that list of preferences and focusing on those that were preferred by the community, but also some that were not in an effort to be comprehensive in this scenario analysis. The residential densities that were explored varied from scenario to scenario and generally hit a range of, say, between 300 and 600 units, depending on the scenario, the mix of uses and scale. And it also included other uses, which also varied in the amount of square footage and area that were part of each of those scenarios. So you can see ranging from, say, 300,000 square feet up to just around a million square feet of use on this 88-acre property. They all assumed also a dedicated amount of open space on the site, seeing that that was the community's top preference in terms of uses. And I think that the scale of the property and the areas of the property, which are also off-limits to development due to their nature as wetlands, provide ample opportunities to integrate some community amenities, walking paths, some modest open space, et cetera, in connection to the future Metacomic Greenway as well. So that's the overview of this work. And now just to give a few examples to help help understand what's behind this summary presentation that I'm giving this evening. So if we focus on the fifth of those pathways that I described, which is the new community-supported zoning, there were several approaches to this type of zoning and the uses that could occur within that zoning. For example, you see here, 5A is a scenario which focuses on light industrial uses, and then zoning could potentially be crafted around that use and make sure that it's as desirable from the community's perspective as possible. That would be the focus if, from this analysis, if we find that that is a direction that we would like to move forward in. I'm not saying that necessarily is, but we're here to gather additional reaction in that regard tonight. And other scenarios, you can see 5B is a mixed-use development, which is more residentially focused. 5C is a mixed-use development, which is more commercially focused. 5D is an assisted living facility. So each of these could have a different approach to zoning. And if there are more than one of these, which is seen as both survivable and desirable from the community's perspective, then the new community-supported zoning could incorporate several of these uses as an allowed use, either by rider, by special permit, or site plan review. We haven't gotten that far down the road, but that's sort of looking ahead. What we're trying to get to is understanding what types of uses, what types of scenarios would like to be featured in one of these pathways towards a viable redevelopment outcome, which provides a remediated property at the Southwood Hospital. So taking one of those examples, for each of those 15, we developed a very conceptual diagram of what might occur on the property. And this was less, let's say, exercise in a nice sort of site plan layout and more an exercise in just trying to figure out what type of volume of square footage and unit count are we talking about? And so it's really more of a development cartoon, I would say. These aren't something that you would take to a civil engineer and ask them to start doing the grading plan or anything like that. It's really more just to get a feel for the scale of the development program that could occur within that set of uses within a scenario. So in this case, the diagram depicts a mixed-income residential proposal, potential project or concept, where you could see some of the circulation routes, which would be connecting the interior of the property, potentially some smaller, a network of smaller connected green spaces as well. And then you see the notion of some of the homes, the building footprints there. And that's what we're deriving the square footage and unit counts from, and the overall scale as well, you see denoted with the stories. So this is, this is a general diagram to help us understand the scale of these scenarios that we can actually do the feasibility testing, which I'll share the results of momentarily. So this is, this is a lot, a lot going on in this slide, so I'll just walk you through this table briefly. But each of the 15 scenarios are arrayed as columns here, and you can see those in the first row under scenario. So from 1A, 2A across, all the way to 5F, you can see that the scenarios are clustered by those pathways towards adoption, which I presented earlier. So whether it's the current regulations, the existing zoning, a 40B approach, a 40R approach, or the new zoning with those, that five series of scenarios. There's a brief description underneath that marking of each scenario with the 1A through a 5F, and that just gives you a more layman's description of what that scenario is about. So whether it's related to hospital-related uses or senior housing, light industrial, assisted living, solar farm, et cetera. The uses row below that gives a little more detail in what the uses might be within that description of the scenario. The commercial area is an accounting of the commercial square footage, if there were commercial square feet in the scenario. Mostly that shows up in the mixed-use or commercial scenarios. There are quite a few, maybe about half the scenarios, that don't have commercial square footage at all. Similarly, the row below that accounts for the industrial square footage of concepts where industrial square footage exists. I would say that's probably less than a third, and two-thirds are not industrial-oriented at all. And then residential is more, a more common use case. And so you see residential square footage accounted for as well in the row near the bottom of this table. And then also that's followed by a tabulation of residential units based upon that square footage. So you can see all of this is effectively tracking the development programs in square feet and units for the various scenarios. And then that allows us to test those scenarios. And these development programs, again, for each of the 15, there's a conceptual diagram that goes along with that development scenario that has been the basis for this type of accounting. So this is just getting us sort of the clay by which we're making these concepts make sense and giving them factual numbers, you know, as factual as these hypothetical scenarios can be, and then also being, giving us a grounding by which to test what might, might be occurring on this property in the future. So using those scenarios which we've developed, we went through a series of analyses to compare them. And I, and I think the word "compare" is very important to highlight here. And then it's, it's really comparative analysis that we did. So we're trying to compare those 15 scenarios to each other to test feasibility to say more promising than that one, et cetera. We're not trying to find the right answer here. I think that's not necessarily our role or the town's role. That's the development team's role to find the right answer. We're trying to find as many potentially right answers as possible so that we give them a solvable problem to remediate this property. And that's, that remediation is dependent on the items you see listed here, which is what we've tested for. That includes financial feasibility, the market potential of the development program, the ability for that financial feasibility and market potential to support environmental remediation. We also heard in the community feedback concerns around traffic generation. So we did look at traffic generation as a result of these scenarios, the impact on municipal finances, including the impacts on school enrollment and whether these would be tax revenue generating or, or not as scenarios. And then also thinking about additional items like job creation and affordable housing production. The Venn diagram, which we've been using throughout this process and presented in the last community forum more than a year ago, is very helpful to think about this as, we need to find the common ground between what the neighbors want to see happen on the property, what the town of Norfolk is thinking about in terms of its own goals, in terms of its housing production plan, its master plan, but then also what the property owner needs to see on this property to make this a viable project to move forward with. So we're looking for that center point. The, the top of this, financial feasibility and market feasibility, I would say are squarely in the property owner's circle of this Venn diagram. Things like environmental remediation, traffic generation, municipal fiscal impact, those perhaps are more related to the town, although I think you can make a square argument that environmental remediation is in everyone's interest. And then there are others that perhaps the surrounding residential neighborhoods, they're not as important to, but perhaps they're more important to the town's overall goals, such as job creation or the, the balance of the tax base or affordable housing production. To do this analysis, we have leaned on some of the databases which are available to us, including the CoStar Group's real estate database and for the Norfolk area, and looking at, you know, industry standards for fiscal impact analysis using the town's real data for assessors' information and the town's budget information, using real figures for construction costs from RS Means and other sources, doing trip generation from the ITE, that's the Institute of Traffic Engineers, Trip Generation Manual. So these are all valid data sources which have gone into the, the analysis which we performed and I think are reliable. And again, I would underline reliable in the sense that we're using them at the, this is a planning level analysis, of course. Any one of these, a financial feasibility impact study, a fiscal impact study, these could be, you know, 15,000 or 20,000, even $30,000 studies on their own. And we've tried to do this at a, at a higher level, a planning level that can fit within the constraints of this planning, planning work. But I think it is, its conclusions are valid from our perspective and do, do point in certain directions. But I just want to say that that's, there's certainly more depth and sophistication that can go into any of these tools. I think for our purposes, as comparative analysis, it's appropriate. So let's just kind of go through some of these together, and then I have a summary table which adds everything up. So we're looking from each of these individual metrics, one by one, and then trying to, in that comparative analysis, see how each of these scenarios measure up across all metrics. So when we did the financial feasibility analysis, again, we took development costs based upon building costs on a square foot built, varying assumptions based upon the uses in each scenario that I described, and then also thinking about the soft costs and the potential revenue generation of those development program components, and came up with a relationship between the potential value of that project, the current market value, which we used a, not to get into too much detail, but capitalization rate and net operating income compared to the current market value to try to derive that estimated current market value. And then we compared that to the potential total development costs of those, of that scenario, of the program that I was talking about, to determine whether or not that relationship is positive or negative, so market value versus cost. And these were the results of that comparative analysis. So what we saw was that, in terms of that feasibility, light industrial was rising to the top of this analysis. A warehouse with residential also looked favorable. Assisted living at various scales, assisted living at the scale that it's at under current zoning was, was doing fine. Assisted living also at a, a future new zoning scales was fine as well. And then you get into this middle category between the two dotted lines, and this is where, depending on the assumptions you make, it could go one way or the other in terms of positive or negative. So that includes commercial, retail, office, and residential mixed use, a mixed-use development, one with more residential or one with more commercial, and then solar farm at the very bottom of that, which really, the solar farm took, it took very favorable assumptions to make the solar farm even get close to positive. So that was teetering on the edge of negative. And what you see below the dotted line at the bottom, starting with 2A, senior housing, are those scenarios which really did not work out as a positive revenue generating scenario, really under any assumption scenario. So this is, again, not the sort of end-all authority on financial feasibility, but I think it gives a sound indication of how these various scenarios compare to each other. And again, it's not the only metric that we're studying here, but it gives you a feel for arraying these in a singular financial feasibility ranking. We also thought about the market potential, and this is looking at things like the CoStar housing absorption rates and achievable rents, and whether or not, you know, just rational thinking about the current zoning and how the current zoning's been in place, and there has been no development activity responding to the current zoning. So what the current zoning, in the scale at which the current zoning is placing the uses, I think that it's, it's overly limited in terms of the scale and density of those uses, and therefore no development has been happening under the current zoning. So that means the market potential for those uses is not there under those constraints. What we do see is, of course, residential in general is going to lift many scenarios. Residential in the greater Boston region continues to be quite strong, even with the changes in the lending rates and that the general housing supply shortfalls in the town and surrounding neighboring municipalities continues to place a strong market in residential. Light industrial depends a little bit on the type of user, user, and so that's kind of in that middle category, as is assisted living. Again, the, the solar farm, it's a little bit harder to assess the marketplace for a solar array of the scale. We also did not do any sort of environmental review of sun angles or orientation or anything of that nature for that particular scenario. And then mixed use, as you move down in this category, it depends a little bit on the mix of those uses. So commercial uses, there was less of a market for in this particular location off of the main highways and tucked where the Southwood property is. And so we saw sort of a depreciating potential market value for the inclusion of commercial in those scenarios. in those scenarios. Fiscal impact analysis, I think, was quite interesting. So the results here were that effectively every scenario turned out to be a positive projected annual tax revenue. And so this was based, again, upon the, taking the current budget line items for the town and those that would likely increase with the increase in the types of uses that are noted in the various scenarios, and then also took the current average assessed value of the type of uses that were involved in those scenarios, then multiplied it times the scale of the scenario to get a rough approximation of the increased tax value of that property under that scenario compared to the services which it would demand. And they all showed revenue positive results, and you can see here that that revenue positivity varied, and then you can rank them depending on that variation. But it was the hospital that turned out most revenue positive, of course. Similar explanation for the hospital, which I didn't touch on on the last slide, and the market, but that we have not seen any reason to believe that there's a market for another hospital on this property in this location. Hospitals continue to contract in their, it's not the same era as it once was, as when the Southwood Hospital was in full use as a hospital property. Then you can see, again, the ranking from there, so senior housing more favorable than, for example, mixed use or more commercial, which is just below it, and on down the line with light industrial towards the bottom of this scale. But what was interesting about that is that this was really focused on revenue generation from property taxes only, and it does not account for the taxation of other equipment or taxable items which could increase the revenue side for the town on those types of uses. And just, I won't, I'm not going through all of these, just I think I'm doing environmental and traffic, and then I'm going to go into the summary. I know that we're a little in the weeds now, but I think it's good to just talk through it at this level, too. The, in terms of environmental remediation, the assumptions here were that depending on the use, remediation was held constant in terms of its assumed cost in the modeling of the financial feasibility and in its effect. So in terms of how remediated the site would be, full remediation occurred on those, any of the scenarios which include residential uses. So you can see that is what's above the dotted line here. If there were no residential uses involved, so light industrial or the solar farm, solar array scenario, those assumed a partial remediation, so like a capped landfill and some other cleanup. And then there, below the dotted line, it was, the financial modeling was showing that it's difficult to support the scale of remediation with the financial revenue that would be generated from those scenarios, the five below the dotted line. So hospital-related uses, senior housing, commercial, retail, office and residential, and assisted living, and those were, that's effectively the current, those that are allowed currently on the property. So either what's allowed under all of the restrictions, including the legislative restriction on the property and, or the deed restriction, I should say, or the current zoning restrictions. And just one more to think about at this detailed level. So we also took, again, the trip generation from both coming to and departing from the site, from the standards of trip generation with the ITE manuals, and looked at, at the top of this scale, least traffic, we assumed is the positive side, most traffic is the negative. And so these are arrayed based upon those trip generations that come from those standard manuals, based upon the uses that were involved in each scenario. And so you can see, solar farm, for example, is generating very few additional traffic trips on the surrounding roadways, and then all the way down to a commercial use or a hospital-related use and everything in between. And that had to do both with the use itself, but also the scale of the use that was in that scenario. So this is another slide with a lot of information on it, but it's very useful to see it all together. And so in this slide, again, we have the scenarios which are arrayed across as columns from 1A to 5F. And then each of the metrics which were analyzed and tested are the rows in this case. And so where there's a negative symbol, it basically means that it was, towards the bottom of those comparative scale charts that we just showed, so for example, financial feasibility was mostly negative under the scenarios we were testing, or the check mark means that it was in that middle range, so it wasn't necessarily showing positivity under most circumstances, but if we changed some assumptions, it maybe wasn't negative, but it wasn't the most promising compared to its other scenarios in this set. So then the positive, the plus mark, are those that compared very positively and showed a likelihood to be a viable approach from the financial feasibility perspective or from the market potential perspective. The fiscal impact on the town, example, mostly positive again across the board. Where you get a check mark is where you're towards the bottom of that scale, not necessarily meaning that it was negative for the town, but it was less positive compared to the other scenarios. Environmental remediation, again, positive where it was full remediation, a check where it was, where it's partial remediation, a negative where we have not seen the ability to move forward remediation under its current restrictions. Traffic, again, on that array of comparison, where you have less generation, it's positive, where you have more generation, it's negative, in between, it's that check. Local jobs, where you're producing more jobs with the, both the construction and the operation of a development program, that's the plus, the check is a little less job production. And similarly with affordable housing. And in the affordable housing case, where a development program has no residential period, there's no opportunity for affordable housing, so that would be negative comparatively. So that's what the negative symbol is in that row. So you see all of this arrayed, and just to move from the minus checks and pluses into a numerical evaluation, we just assigned simply an unweighted, unprioritized, across any of the metrics, a zero for the negative, a one for the check, and a two for the positive. And so that's what you see across the bottom of this table as the numbers. So you can see the four, seven, five, seven, eight, 11, 11. So the higher the number, the more positive a scenario would be overall. And so that's what you see here highlighted in yellow, would be across all of these metrics of the comparative analysis that we performed, the scenarios which begin to rise to the top as those which would be an approach which are both sort of heading in a direction that's viable, can provide the town with the type of shoulders to support remediation of the contaminated property, and potentially not have as many of the impacts, or less of the negative impacts that were highlighted in the community forum previously. So that would be moving from left to right, 3A, which is a major residential development under the approach of 40B, and that could be a friendly 40B, or it could be another approach, but that's an option which is available even today without any town changes. 4A is a major residential development under 40R, which in many ways is similar, like would have a similar outcome to 40B, except the town would be more in control of that smart growth overlay district, that's the 40R program. And the, a part of that is that the town would receive incentive payments with unit production as it occurs within that zone. And those incentive payments were included in our fiscal impact calculations. I would say they didn't actually move the needle that much, to be honest. So then 4C would be a modest-scale residential development, also under 40R, I believe, that should be noted as 40R. It was just less dense, I believe, was the difference between 4A and 4C. And then five, the prefix of five denotes where there's new zoning contemplated. Again, new zoning that has not been really designed in any way as yet, but that would be a scenario with assisted living, which showed up as one of the most favorable approaches. So we could think about assisted living as an approach with zoning likely, I think the difference there between the 5D zoning and the 2D zoning, because there is assisted living which is allowed as a use today, is the removal of the density restriction which is there today, which I believe is, I want to say three units break, I would need to check on that, though. And then the 5F, which is warehouse and residential, which was the most positive, and that was a, because the site's large enough, there's potentially the possibility to have a portion of it be devoted to a warehouse or light industrial use and a portion of it devoted to residential use. And that was for many of the reasons, which we just talked through all those details, showed up as the comparative approach, a positive overall. So that's the results here, now just to kind of bring it home before we can discuss and get feedback on all this. So I think as a starting point, really, it's the financial feasibility portion of this analysis, the market potential and the environmental remediation aspects of it that really are the foundation and the starting point. Without checking the boxes, so to speak, on those three, it's difficult to move forward with this scenario because of that viability is a fundamental component, of course. The scenarios that fall into that category are these which are on the screen and bulleted from our perspective, from this comparative analysis. There's one, the assisted living, is the one with the little people symbol on its left side that denotes overlap between the previous community forum and this analysis. So that's, I can just make that a little finer point on this next slide. So if we start where, end where we started and go back to the community forum feedback previously, which showed the most appropriate uses from the community's perspective, the, unfortunately, I will say, the analysis which we performed is actually showing viable pathways in almost the exact opposite array of what the community preferences were. So you can see at the bottom of the scale are where most of the hidden line boxes are, the dashed boxes, and those are the ones that showed up as those viable pathways that checked the most boxes and were most favorably compared across these 15 scenarios. The senior living continuum of care option is the one that is most up this chart in terms of community preferences and that potential viable pathway forward. So I draw from this a few conclusions, and I think really, to me, this presentation and discussion is about, hopefully, positively and productively refocusing the conversation if that pivot is possible. I think that one of my conclusions are that the current zoning is not feasible, and I think that, that has been shown in the real world, not just in our analysis, but that it's been difficult to get a project or a process moving forward under the current restrictions. I think that there are also uses which show up potentially as some community preferred uses and have been talked about in meetings or discussions, which show up pretty clearly as not feasible. And so we should probably, it would be more productive to devote conversation and time to other uses. And those include a solar farm or solar array, a hospital or hospital-related uses, which I don't think were talked about as much by the community. A retail center just didn't show up positively. A community retail, more of a neighborhood-serving area, also office park or commercial uses in general. Having something that's open space only, again, I think there can be open space components, a network of, you know, community amenities or other open spaces, connections, et cetera, that makes sense and would be 100% a part of a viable concept, but not like an entire conserved property of 80 acres. And then lastly, I think that the notion of knitting this in with the surrounding context of single-family homes, well, it's pleasant thought and desirable. I think that it just does not provide the density that's necessary to carry the burden of remediation, and that the comparative analysis that we've done supports that conclusion. So the, to help refocus the conversation, some of the questions that we have are how best to refocus on the scenarios that provide the greatest opportunity for viability? And to shorthand all of this, I would say that includes residential development in general, that we need to discuss sort of the scale and approach to and how to make that as desirable as possible from the community's perspective and what characteristics that might have. Assisted living looks very promising, and again, there'd be a lot to define around what a successful assisted living project might look like for the town and for the community. And then also, if there's any opportunity, I know that it's years ago now when this property first came back onto the attention, that there was a discussion around a light industrial or warehouse property project, and that was really strongly rejected. So I don't know if that, if that's still a non-starter or if there's potentially some room there, but it does look like one of the avenues for viability moving forward. And then...
We lost audio.
Hold on, Josh, we lost you.
We were doing so well, so. Try again, Josh.
Okay, is it good now?
Yep, we're getting there.
Nope.
How's it now?
Oh, there you are.
Okay?
Yes, yes, all good.
All right. Good, thanks. I think a lot of the information that we have, which I didn't present in this presentation, around more details on the community's vision, the specific items that could be a part of a zoning package in regard to other community benefits or ways to make this attractive, to give amenities to the surrounding neighborhoods, et cetera, to really bring those into the conversation and see if there's a way to make some of these options seem more viable and attractive. And then also, again, to underline that it is not the town's role, nor are our role, to determine a single recommended outcome for the Southwood property, that we're trying to open as many doors as possible that the community and the town can feel comfortable with while trying to reduce the barriers to remediation of this property, which is, I think, what we heard loud and clear was the ultimate priority and goal. So that's what, hopefully, we're starting to, maybe this work is helping to shed some light on what path there is forward, and we'd be happy to hear the questions and comments this evening and then help to hopefully move in a productive direction together. So from here, we look to gather reactions and feedback on this scenario analysis, which we hope was, is helpful and helps move the conversation forward, and then also translate those scenarios which seem fruitful into zoning concepts, which we can then develop with the planning board in the town over the next few months and weeks. I do have some polling questions at the very end, but I think I'll pull those up after we have a chance for some questions and comments. So I'll stop sharing and we can just talk about it.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
No, very thorough.
Yeah.
Yeah, hard to get the data. Not necessarily what I wanted to hear.
The data doesn't lie, it does tell a story.
Absolutely does. But yes, to your point, I think it might be some sort of a happy medium across a couple of those options, and integrating those with some of what the town does want to see in that area in addition to things that we might not necessarily have really wanted in that space. But, you know, I would leave that up to the developers to decide, but yeah, it sucks.
I do know we have a question in the, in the room. Yep. Want to grab a microphone?
I don't think I need it.
You do, for the people online.
For the people online.
Oh.
For the, yeah.
Yeah.
Just state your name and address.
It's on.
It's on?
Yep.
Okay. My name is Horace Roy Hamlin. I own Hamlin Cabinets. And I've been in business 60 years in the town of Norfolk. First of all, Dedham Street runs right through that area. So I was kind of wondering which side has, you know, it wasn't spelled out, 40 acres on one side, 40 acres on the other side. So the total of 86 acres, but the, and the water supply came from the west side, I'll call it, of 1A. It was called Pondville Hospital. And at the time, when I, I don't know the date, but it was a cancer hospital. This was, you know, that's basically the, why it was built. And so you never, it touched on the base of about a super fund or anything like that to help clean it up. You know, that's all before this is going to happen. So I was wondering why it didn't touch bases on that. And then, and just a small note, that Walpole MCI has closed. And that is 80%, 80%, that's a little bit of a guess, in Norfolk. That's 80% in Norfolk. So that's all, something in the future will happen, you know. And then, let's see. As far as uses, more of a hospital, I would say that, you know, that'd have to be so much money spent to bring it up to date and things like that. It'd be pretty hard to do that. And so, and as far as all the other things are good, you know, I mean, we'll vote on whatever we want in the end, so I'm not worried about that. But it was very well planned and, you know, presented, and I was impressed by it. But those few things that I had questions on, if you know, and, you know, town storage and town water, I didn't, I didn't hear anything brought up about that.
Yeah, so I know a lot of those questions have been answered previously at some of these meetings. The property, so it's all, all 80 acres are on, I guess you could kind of consider it the east side of Dedham.
Oh.
So it's all continuous on, on just one side of, on Dedham, 1A.
Okay.
So that's the answer to that. The, regarding the, you mentioned like a super fund. So the developer had bought the site, as is, it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Rich, that the, this was a state hospital and the state pretty much just walked away and washed their hands of it.
Right.
And so, so the developer has to bear the burden to clean that, to clean that up.
Okay.
Which is unfortunate.
Archdiocese owns it now still?
No, no, so the archdiocese sold it back in two.
2020?
2020, yeah, February 2020, 21. February 21, yeah, thank you. Yeah, so February 21, the archdiocese sold that to a private developer.
So my family came here in 1918, just a little information for you. And, and so they loved the town and things like that, the same as I have, so.
And I think, was there another question there about where the water's coming from or where?
Oh, town storage and, and water, yeah.
So.
No, in terms of the water, the thought would be would connect to town water.
Right.
Town Norfolk, the sewage is, that's a separate question.
Yeah.
There is no town sewage to there, so that's a to-be-determined question in terms of how that would be addressed. But a good point that he did make, so it once was Pondville, which is the same, and then it transitioned to Southwood. So it's all in terms of, it's the same property, so.
Right.
You've been around, so you know the long, long history of it, but.
I do, yeah.
Yeah, so for those at home that are not familiar, it was Pondville, now it's Southwood. Well, it was, well, Southwood, I'm trying to think. It's all the same property.
And then, of course, you know, I talked about Walpole MCI, which, you know, town sewage must reach from the other side. WM.
There is, the prison does have their own wastewater treatment plant across the street.
Well, that's in Norfolk.
Yeah.
That's behind Secoak Street, yeah.
Yes.
And so town water is, is not too far away, I don't think, yeah.
No, it's not.
Norfolk town water is not too far away, because, you know, I tried to put the town water in originally, and then I got on the Board of Water Commissioners, and then we put in the, the town itself put in the town water, so. All right, good enough for me.
Yeah, no, those are great questions. I think a lot of us up here, we've, we've been through the process and we've been here for, since 2021 and before that. So, you know, it's great that we're getting more community involvement, more people asking these questions and appreciate those and appreciate bringing those up again because it's good to refresh not only everybody on the call, but just ourselves as well. And so, thank you. Was there any other questions in the room? Didn't see any. Do we have any questions on Zoom?
I don't see any.
Okay. Josh, I'll hand it back to you. I think that answers all the questions for right now.
Is there any information that's going to be passed out? What we, I couldn't read some of this, it was too small for me to read, but.
Yes, so there is, I just see a quarter of my eyes saw a hand pop up.
Yep.
So what we will, we can, what we'll do after this, on the town website, we could also, if you want to stop by, we can print you out a copy of it if you don't want to do that. We're always welcome to do that. But we will put it on the town website under the Southwood Hospital folder. The presentation will be available for the public after tonight's meeting. I'm going to have it available. I think I'll throw one question out to Josh in terms of just thinking about this. I suspect we're going to want some additional input from the community. So I have to kind of think about some ways to get some additional feedback to try to narrow the focus of it. So I don't know, we, maybe we, well, we'll definitely post it, but maybe we ask people to respond. We'll have to figure something out to get additional feedback, though.
No, that's a good, that's a good point. And then the, the analysis is very different from the community requests, I guess you could say. So what the community wants and what the numbers show are different. And what Chris was saying is like, we need to find a happy medium. And in Josh's presentation, he said, we need to refocus our conversation and look at some things we can now throw away, like, hey, this doesn't make any sense, but now other things we need to re.
Investigate, yeah.
Yeah, we need to further the investigation on.
There was a hand up, I see.
Jane Dewey.
Yep, Jane?
Yes, hi. First of all, I think that was a very clear presentation and answered a lot of questions I have. And I understand it's, what, at this point, I think would be very helpful to know what the developer would like to do because I think you have a good handle on what the town is looking for. But as you say very clearly, Josh, you need to understand what, how the developer can make money because they have to spend a lot of money cleaning up the site. And rather than, at this point, going back and asking the town for, hey, what would you like on your wish list, I think it would be so helpful to know, because I assume the developer has done a lot of extensive studies on what, what makes sense to them. It would be great to have an idea from them, a shortlist of what they are willing to build. And then go back to the town and say, okay, this is what, this would be feasible for the developer. What of these things can, you know, would you like? Is there a control? I mean, they really are, other than zoning changes, which, you know, the town has to go along with. And it sounds like that's what we'd need. But I think at this point, that would be really helpful. And I'm sure they've done a lot of studies, they've put an investment in this.
So not to put you on the spot.
Oh. We didn't think we'd do that.
However, if you do want to comment, you're welcome to. The two representatives are in the audience.
Yeah, I.
Hold on, microphone.
We do need you to go to the mic or go up to the, over.
Or you can sit at the table.
It's a table or a mic?
Over there, yeah, there's a microphone over there. You could just, yeah, you could just sit at the table, yeah.
You're welcome to join, Jackie, if you want.
Yeah.
So we will, we, we really were here to listen tonight, but know that Rich likes, likes to put us on the spot, so we would just, we did have some thoughts here. But we do just want, I think we want to begin, well, first of all, my name is Bill Buckley, and I'm here tonight on behalf of GFI Partners and 111 Dedham Street, Inc. I'm here tonight with Jackie Martin, who is the Director of Public Relations for GFI Partners. Online are also some other members of the GFI team, Hannah Jadovic, who's a project director on this project, and Mr. Larry Shell, who is a consultant working with us. So GFI is strongly invested in this site, right? And we, we want to thank you for this opportunity to offer a few comments, but also just, we want to thank Rich, the town, and Justin, and everyone who's been, you know, we appreciate the efforts that, that the town has made to help provide a direction and provide a vision for the site, right? And it's, we've actually been anxiously awaiting these results, right? Because we think that this is, you know, we hoped that the results would provide us with some direction to do just as what, what I think Jane suggested online there, right? For us to, to develop a project that comes back to, to the town that we work together at, that maybe is, maybe is something that was reflected in that study or maybe it's a, you know, something that's a combination of, of some of those uses. Primarily, we're here to listen tonight. I will just provide an update for, for the group is that, you know, we'll, we'll be in this room again tomorrow night in front of the Conservation Commission because we have a request. We, we have a whole nother phase of testing for the environmental remediation that's required at the site. And, you know, there wasn't a lot of detail provided on that tonight, that just wasn't the forum. But there's, you know, extensive remediation and cleanup that's necessary before any of those scenarios can really get discussed, right? So we're starting a whole new round of testing. We're going to be taking some soil borings at the, in the waste disposal area that's been left on site. We have some groundwater monitoring wells that are getting installed, and we need some conservation approval in order to do that work. That's going to give us some additional data to, to tell us what's needed to clean up before we can start getting into these redevelopment scenarios. But, you know, GFI has experience in many of the asset classes that were discussed and some of the uses and options that were discussed tonight. So we're encouraged that, that there may be options for us, right? And we, you know, we're going to continue to gather data on the cleanup. We're going to continue to listen to the residents in the neighborhood. We've, we've tried to engage, actively engage with the neighborhood, the PIP group on the, you know, which is to give them, you know, to work kind of hand in hand with them on the remediation plans for the site. We've made a real effort over the past year and a half to, to engage with them, and we want to, we want to continue to do that work. But, you know, we're, we're going to, we're going to review the findings that were presented tonight, kind of take that back to our, to our work group and, and balance that with the remediation costs that we're still kind of assembling. And, you know, we look forward to continuing a partnership with the town, with the residents. And, you know, we're, we're, the good news is, we all want a similar outcome here, right? We want a good product that's going to clean the site, right? So it's kind of like, if we can, if we can work together, we can, you know, it seems like there's a path to that, so.
That's great. I mean, that's, that's very encouraging, and that's what, that's what we want as a town. I can't speak for all the town members, but I know that the planning board, you know, that's what we want too. We want something, and you guys have been fantastic working with us up to this point. And I hope that continues as well as, and, you know, we want something that's obviously economically feasible for you and, and, and so you can do the cleanup, but we want something that's going to be a good use and in alignment with the town's goals. Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Were there any other questions online? I don't see any hands up. Was there anything in the chat, Betsy? I saw something, but it wasn't a question, it was more of a comment.
It was just a comment.
All right, well, yes, I think probably concluded for this evening. As I mentioned, we'll have it.
I think Josh had a final.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You wanted to add.
All right. Yes, jumped ahead, sorry.
Yes, thank you, guys. I, so I, I do have a, I'm a sucker for interactive polling, that you all know by now. So I have some, like an exit survey of sorts. So after, for those who have been present this evening and had the benefit of the presentation of our comparative analysis, just have a series of sort of, how much would you potentially be interested in, in the scenarios which were deemed viable by that analysis? And so I'll share that now and tell you how to connect to that poll. And then, Rich, perhaps, as you suggested, we could share this as a follow-up survey as well to the broader community who wasn't able to join us this evening. But you can see that on the screen now, so hopefully you're able to.
Oh, I see.
Let me see, actually. Oh, I, no, sorry, I need to do this differently, I realized. Again? Hold on.
It'd been better with a little bit larger screen.
Oh, for you, yeah.
Well.
I can't read that.
You can come, if you want to sit in one of those chairs there, you can see the screen on the side a little bit better.
Can you, can you put that over there? No, all that's on there, never mind.
Which one?
Never mind, I was going to say, put it on here and then it goes up there, but.
He's going to ask a question eventually.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that should work now. But the, so it's just going through the scenarios one by one and simply asking how you feel about that scenario now as a path forward with, you can, I'll explain how to respond to. So if you're at a computer, you can go to pollev.com/mapcpoll. And then that should bring up the same question, which is now shared on the screen. If you're in the meeting room and you have a phone with you, you can go to your text message app and you would type in, the recipient is the number 22333, and the message you want to send is mapcpoll. And that will connect you to the poll.
What was the link again?
It's pollev, so P-O-L-L-E-V dot com.
Okay.
Slash mapcpoll. And it should be at the top of the screen that's shared also, you can see it there. And so the question is, goes one through, one by one, through the scenarios which were identified as potentially viable outcomes. And so the first is, given the discussion this evening, how do you now feel about light industrial slash warehouse as a possible path forward? And then the potential answer response is, you would respond, A, once you're connected, if you say, yes, I could support this direction, or B, maybe, but I would need to see more details. C, maybe, but I'm not yet convinced, so you're not quite there yet. D, where you're still not there, or E, absolutely not, I will not change this opinion if this is, there's not, not any amount of data convincing that could get you there. So I'll just hang out here for a minute because I do see the changes. Can you all see the bar graph change, by the way?
It's not changing.
Oh.
So can you?
I'll give you.
If I could just say something, I know I need the.
The microphone.
Can you put the link in the chat? That's one of the requests, it's on the, if you see that?
Yes.
Is it on again, yeah?
It's on, yeah.
Oh, there you go. Thanks, Kevin.
You know, I know you've been in, gone to a lot of work and you have a lot of scenarios and everything like that. But for, for my personal and other business people that I've talked to and, and people that live in the town of Norfolk, you know what I mean? That with this, all the additional taxes are going to come from new schools in Norfolk and Tri Valley and, and, you know, so we want something that's going to produce a lot of tax revenue for the town on that property. And to be honest with you, I think that should be the number one, you know? And you've done a great job on it, but my personal opinion, and, and I've spoken to a lot of other ones and they talk about the same thing, you know, new schools all. around, immigration coming into Plainville, and rent them maybe, and all those have to be taken care of, and Tri Valley, we're one of the eight towns, I think it is, and our own school system needs to be added on to also, so. See, if you come to Dunkin' Donuts in the morning, you'd hear all this conversation all the time, and you'd know where I'm coming from. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That, I will just editorialize and say that is consistent with what we've been hearing a lot in the master plan process as well, is the importance of the tax base.
Yes. So my curiosity, what, Josh, you look up a lot, you have, like, big screen, what's going on tonight?
I do, I do have another screen there, sorry, Mike.
Okay.
I don't, I'm not, I'm not rolling my eyes at everyone, so I apologize.
No, I didn't think so.
We can't see them anymore, but.
Oh, you can't.
We just see the poll. Yeah, we just see the poll, but nothing's moving yet.
So I see it on my screen, and I, it looks like I am not going to be able to share it so that you can see it, but I'll tell you what the results are. So the, for the industrial warehouse, which is the only question we've done so far, is the leading answer is 37% at no, I'm still not there, which was D, followed by 25% at yes, I could support this direction, and 25% at maybe, I would need to see more details, which were the top two, sort of more positive responses. And then 15% is the balance at maybe, but I'm not convinced, which is the middle. All right, so let's do the same fashion of question for the next, which is industrial and warehouse with residential now. I was adding residential, which was one of the scenarios explored, and I see the results coming in now, so that should have updated. If you're looking at this through a browser, the new question should be there. If you are doing this through your cell phone, you would just, again, respond A, B, C, D, or E, depending on which answer you'd like to respond with.
Will the survey be available to the public in the future?
Yeah, we'll put this, same, the same series of questions with the work with Rich to get that up onto the town. So the responses here are similar, they're changing still a little bit. So the leading answer is C at 29%, which is maybe, but I'm not yet convinced, followed by 24% at yes, I could support this direction, and 24% at no, I'm still not there, and 18% at maybe, but I need to see more details, and there are 6% in this case at absolutely not, I will not change this opinion. So let's move on to the next, which is, how do you feel about assisted living as a possible path forward? All right, looks like the results have mostly settled down, so in this case, yes, I could support this direction, A was the top response with 37%, followed by maybe, I would need to see more details, which is B, 32%, followed by maybe, but I'm not yet convinced, which is C at 26%, and 5% at no, I'm still not there, and 0% at absolutely not. So that one, that one's much more positively shaped. And then this is, I think we have two more. This one is your residential development, and that's parenthetically 400-plus units as a possible path forward. And again, it's the same series of answers, where you have A, yes, I could support this direction, B, maybe, I would need to see more details, C, maybe, but I'm not yet convinced, D, no, I'm still not there, or E, absolutely not, I will not change this opinion. Still moving around a bit. And I apologize that this, the fun part of this is when you all can see the movement of these graphs, too, but don't mean to hide that light under a bushel, but that's what's happening. So 32% in this case is with B, maybe, I would need to see more details, followed by D, which is no, I'm still not there, at 26%, and absolutely not, I will not change this opinion, at 21%, which was E. And then A, yes, I could support this direction, and C, maybe, but I'm not yet convinced, both at 11% as the final two answers. And then the last, I think this is the last one, which is, given the discussion this evening, how do you feel about a more modest-scale residential development, 300-plus units Those options are still, the answers are still coming in, looks like it's settled down now. Number, this is a more, again, so for one is A, yes, I could support this direction at 28%, followed by B, maybe, I would need to see more details, also at 28%, C at 17% maybe, but I'm not yet convinced, and D, no, I'm still not there, is also 17%, and then 11% at the bottom, absolutely not, I will not change this opinion. And that was the questions that aligned with those viable pathways, so I'll stop that share. All right, well, I appreciate the attention this evening, and thank you, Planning Board, for the time to make this presentation, and we will, I'll circle back with Rich and get the materials for posting, so we can expand the outreach, and then we will circle back about the next steps as we turn toward thinking about this as zoning concepts moving forward.
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Josh.
Thanks, Josh.
Great presentation.
Thank you.
Can I ask if there's a timeframe for the grant or the study in general? Is there an end?
So we're more or less on our own pace now. The grant that we have, they forward, originally it was going to be time sequenced, but they actually changed where they forward fund us the money, so we have the money in-house to pay for the rest of it, so. So it's not, it's up to our schedule in terms of finishing this stuff.
And the budget for it and support, continuing to.
I'll have to get this going. I'll have to check in with Josh how much more the budget will get us in terms of where we're at, so I'll let you know, I'll get an update for you at the last, at the next So we're, segue to the public hearing.
Yeah, so, one last.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One last thing on Southwood is that I'm, you know, I'm assuming now that GFI needs to go back with this and kind of take this scenario, these analysis, this scenario, and then put together a strategic plan when I move forward. And that'll be some time, and then they'll get back to you and.
Yeah, then we can have additional conversations after that.
Okay. Yep, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, so we are past our 8:15 window, so we can start the, we can, I guess reopen the public hearing.
No, reason, no.
I'm sorry, we don't need to reopen.
It's a brand-new hearing.
Brand-new.
Oh, this is the, oh, I'm sorry, this is the brand-new, yes, yes. So publicly, so we do have the 8:15 public hearing to discuss the zoning bylaws, so Eric, take us.
Sure. Notice is hereby given in accordance to Chapter 48 of the Master Plan Law, that the Norfolk Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 10th, 2023, at 8:15 PM at the Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, to discuss proposed changes to the Norfolk zoning bylaw, which have been submitted to the warrant for the November 14th, 2023 special town meeting. Complete copies of the text of the amendments are available for review at the town in Norfolk website, or in the Planning Board office between the hours of 9 and 6 PM, Monday to Thursday. May I waive the reading?
Motion to waive the reading.
Motion to waive the reading.
Some moves.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So can we put that up on the, this screen?
Group can.
And the share, I guess, on the screen for us and the screen for Zoom? Yeah, so my mistake, that's right, we haven't opened the public hearing for this, we did open, we've had a few other public hearings for other zoning bylaws.
Right.
So this is the, this is the one, we talked about this more of a working scenario at our last meeting, so now is the official public hearing for this. And so as you'll be able to see once Betsy gets us up here, we do have some strike-through language, and then some new bold language that's replacing the strike-throughs.
And so, as Betsy, actually, you know what? I think I might share my screen, which, that way you can see the other document, which is a little more illustrated.
So this is modifying Section 310-6.4, non-conforming structures, and then Section 310-6.5, accessory buildings.
So this will help the people at home.
Yes.
Follow along.
Yes.
With, in terms of what's, some slight revisions to the language, the.
Yes.
So what we did was, you, you sent the draft language off to the select board last month, no, actually, in September, oh, excuse me, August.
August, yeah.
And then we had a chance to take a look at it with town council and got some additional feedback, and based upon the feedback, there was some revisions that they recommended the board give consideration to, to clean it up. So what's sharing on screen with the folks at home, and you can see in front of you, what's highlighted, what's identified in the blue text, the blue color, not on that, on the one in front of you.
Okay.
Now, look in front, not there.
Colorblind.
Hold on, I can pull that one up, too.
If you want the other one, yeah, you can pull that, so you can see it all over the place.
I like your color.
Yeah, figure the color helps a little bit, follow along. So before you, you have strike-through, which is delete language, and then bold is, in the black font, black color, excuse me, it's bold, but the blue is suggestions from town council to make some revisions to it, to have a read, not in a negative sense, more of a positive, you can do this, as opposed to the way the previous wording is in the bylaw, it's more from the negative, and I think it's just easier to follow along. I think it says, it says the same thing, but it's a little bit easier to follow along. So that was what they recommended changing it to, which is the concept with this proposed amendment, so for alteration enlargements of non-conforming structures, if you want to add an alteration to enlargement to an existing structure, if you don't violate the setback any greater extent than it is currently today, you can do it by right, that would be a new provision. Right now, it's by special permit. I did, I don't know how much detail you want to get into, but I did provide you some examples of applications that were before the Board of Appeals over the last six years, whereby applicants have had to come in for a special permit to take down a vestibule in the front of their house that was falling apart, and wanted to reconstruct it, that they had to go for a special permit. It wasn't any closer to the front in those cases. If this change were to go forward, they could just do that as a matter of right, so go to the building department and get a building permit. Today, they have to go through a special permit process. Similar to other expansions where insignificant, but yet still, again, not encroaching on setbacks, they had to go before the zoning board of appeals for a special permit, they met all the zoning requirements. There was one more recently on North Street, where they had pre-existing non-conforming house, and they added a second story to it. They went for a special permit, and they got it. If this was in place, they could just go get a building permit and go forward with it. I mean, if there's conservation, those things, but in terms of zoning-wise. The other change to this provision is, in cases where there are, there are buildings, this is an older community in terms of structures in town, if you want to encroach, so lessen going to one of those setbacks, presently, you have to go through a variance process, which, a variance process is a much higher bar, you know, it's hardship. Whereas the proposal was allowed by special permit, which is more, how's it fit within the neighborhood, community impact, character, and so forth, so it would allow for those situations as opposed. And there's been situations over the past few years where people have gone on and have gotten a variance under those scenarios. This will allow, and there's other cases where some people have gone in, were denied, so, but it would give a different pathway, so it's a different criteria. So that's what would be the case, what's before you tonight. And that also is applicable to, if you scroll down, to demolition reconstruction. The caveat, in terms of demolition reconstruction, there is a 500-square-foot cap, if you will, of how much you can tear down and reconstruct and expand. So there is a 500-square-foot cap on that, to not essentially tear down a small structure and expand it so much that overwhelms the neighborhood. And then an Article 21, which is the new provision, which will allow for accessory buildings to go for a special permit for side, rear, and front setbacks, that doesn't exist today. There was comment that it was a little bit, was confusing the way it was originally drafted in the article, so what review with council is to take in no event in the front yard, which I understand makes, creates confusion, because the idea is this permit would allow somebody to go for a special permit for accessory building in the front yard. Where this has come into play is with sheds, it's been one of the primary area, but also in garage cases, too. So there are properties where, you know, there are homes that are much further set back, more than 50, 50, 100 feet back from, they will allow, you know, it will allow them to then go in front of the house, because the front yard, by the bylaws, left side of your property, right side, that whole rectangular area. So I think, you know, what has happened over the past instances where somebody went to put a shed, which they thought visually, when you look at the property, it's really my side, but technically, you know, the zoning bylaws, the front yard, because it's within that 50-foot area. This would allow somebody to be able to do that through a special permit process. This is only applicable in the residential 1, 2, and 3 zone, and this is also applicable to 1, 2 families as well. So it gives residents that option. So those, in essence, that's the, what these two articles are about.
And then I know you pulled the, kind of, the numbers on how many permits and variances have been requested over the years, and so.
Yeah, I have a chart I can show you, share, if you want me to share, I mean.
Sure.
I've used, you've, I've shared with the board.
I think it's, I think it's good to see, you know, you got some COVID years in there, and things were a little weird then. I mean, obviously, in 2021, everybody was doing projects, so those numbers were a little high, but then also in 2019, numbers are high, I guess, you know, also in 2019, everybody was doing a lot of home projects.
Yes, let me see where my.
But it seems like the average, if I were to average them, we're just looking at this, looks like we get about.
Yeah, if you can make that bigger.
Yeah, if you can make that bigger, it looks like on average, there's probably five.
Down in the middle.
Five to 15 are special permits, but on average 10 a year. Variances are ranging from two to seven, so four a year variances.
Yeah. So I tried to illustrate in this chart here for you is from 2017 to 2023, total number of special permits applied for before the ZBA and the variances, and then break it out by if we had this special permit provision in place back then, how that would impact some of those applications in terms of what would potentially happen. And so of the, the variances, they were then, excuse me, actually not the variances. No, yes, sorry. We'll start with a special permit. You can see that eight of them, well, two, two in 2018 could have been by right. 2019, it could have been by right. 22, three of them could have been by right. And so just to kind of illustrate what that impact would be.
When you also wonder how many people just actually aren't just asking for a permit. I mean, there's people out there that'll just build it not knowing. I mean, but then there's people that are probably like, there's, there's some homeowners are like, well, I know I can't do this because it's, it's just too much work. You know, it's like.
Yeah. So this is, this is taking into account people that apply for.
Right. But there's the, there's obviously the people that'll just go do it. But then there's also the people that will do their research, they'll look at and go, oh, I don't know if I want to go through all the work to do this because it's going to be a special permit or a variance. But by making this by right, and especially the reconstruction, by making it by right to reconstruct, just reconstruct makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. So it just gives you a sense of what, you know, they, they did grant these permits already, you know, so in those cases. So it would have meant, in some cases, a lot of the homeowners, they weren't aware of it until, you know, the contractor went to go apply to get a building permit. And then they're like, no, you need to go get a special permit. So this year's definitely been that case. We've had a few of those that have been on hold until they were able to go get a special permit to do that. And then, like I said, there's some situations where eliminating variances as well. So. And this, this really, this, these two articles are really focused around the residents in terms of this is not something that we're, that's the audience that we're trying to assist with these changes.
Is the ZBA favorable for this?
Yeah. In fact, they're the ones that kind of advocated for, I think this year was kind of that bellwether year where they said, wait a minute, these people have to go for a special permit for this. And so they're the ones that really advocated for the changes for the non-conforming section of the bylaw that's before you. They're the ones that kind of pushed that forward. The other one, the accessory buildings was more generally your, I mean, it's them too, but you know, it's been back and forth between both the planning board and ZBA.
Even just having a special permit versus a variance makes such a big difference when you're, you know, when you're used to that, when you're building and you know those terms. If you hear you're going to need a variance, you just move on.
Typically, yes.
In any town, not just this one. Right.
And it should be for a reason. I mean, that's, that is what a variance is for.
But in these cases, if you have a non-conforming, you know, if you have a house that happens to be a little bit closer to the front than it should be, you should be able to do, you know, add on to the back or all of the scenarios that Rich has pointed out. I think it makes perfect sense and to not fill up the schedule for the ZBA for something that's so simple.
It's just all about improving our, our bylaws.
Yep.
I don't have any other questions.
Want to open up to the?
Uh, yeah, let's open it up to anyone in the room or on Zoom. Anything in the chat?
The chat is from the last topic.
Yep. I don't see anything.
So want to.
So then I think we would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So a public hearing closed. Do we, you need a final vote from us on this language since we haven't, I know we.
Yes.
We submitted it and recommended, I guess you could say.
Submitted, recommended, and then if you concur with the, what's highlighted, you know, identified in blue, that'll be the final, if you vote that, that'll be the language that'll be included onto the warrant.
Okay.
For town meeting.
So any, any, any revisions to this language? I can't see any. We've kind of hashed out the last two meetings.
Yeah. I mean, the only concern is, it's probably less of a concern, especially if council's already gone through it and made that recommendation. But I was just trying to tangle between enlargement and whether or not that becomes a greater extent and whether or not that like is something that could be argued. And if you're going up, no, not necessarily. If you're going back, not necessarily. It's only if you're going to the sides or the front, really, that becomes, it's an issue, but then that becomes a, a different topic.
I mean, you could do it, you know.
As long as you're within the height restrictions. Right. So I, I think it becomes more self-explanatory as you talk it out. But just looking at it on paper, it sounds contradictory or seems contradictory. So I'm, I'm fine with keeping it and I trust that the, you know, building department will do the right thing.
Okay. So then I would like to entertain a motion to, to move forward with, with, what is it, well, as written in the, in the public hearing, these, these two articles as, are these going to be one article or two, or we don't?
They will be two.
They will be two. Okay. So recommend to move forward with these two articles as written here.
As amended.
As amended.
By town council.
Well, I was going to say as written in the public hearing, because we opened this public hearing. They haven't been. Well, I guess you could say you're right.
Because what we have in the warrant is different than what's here.
Right. As, as what's in the public hearing, as amended by town council.
Yes. Correct.
Because this has been updated from what we submitted originally.
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just to follow up on your point about whether they were one article or not, discussions with town council, they're really, they are two different sections of the bylaw.
Okay.
So that's why.
Okay.
They really necessitate two.
I mean, I just thought it'd make sense to make them as one since they're so, they're so similar.
Similar but different.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's all.
That's fine.
All right.
And there, I guess I, you know, there really is no reason to combine them because they don't, they're, they're mutually exclusive. You don't, you don't need one to support the others.
No, correct.
Okay. All right. The, that was the 8:15 public hearing. So then the 8:30 public hearing, we're a little behind schedule, is for Three MacArthur Avenue. And I understand that they requested a continuance. A lot of work on, work on the analysis.
Yeah. So they did request a continuance to the November meeting. Rick Gudjoe from United Consulting is, he is on Zoom if necessary. But so the, the reason why they're continuing is they are going to do some survey work to pursue coming in from Hunter Ave to the, to the property as opposed to coming up from Lake Shore Drive.
Yep.
And so they'll need to do survey work, topo, et cetera, to evaluate that option. I don't know if it'll, the requesting continues to November. It might have something that you can, and the public can look at in November, but just to keep it a month out instead of go further out, might be more updates to share at that point, but.
Kevin O'Toole, 26 Hunter Ave.
Microphone. It's not for us in the room.
It's for home.
It's for, it's for on the recording.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Are they going to have to pave that road or is it going to be a dirt road if they chose to get down that road?
There'd have to be road improvements done.
Yeah, there'll have to be some road improvements and it all depends on, you know, if they want to go through the whole process of having it accepted by the town as a, as a town road. That bar is pretty high. But, you know, as it stands right now, it's pretty rough. You know, they'll have to, yeah, the plan will have to show definitely some significant improvements to get down to that site.
Yeah. It was a requirement for public safety for them to do road improvements. So that would be included in their plan.
Okay, thank you.
Lorreagan in 73 Priscilla Ave. So they requested the continuance. Was that automatically granted? Is that how that works?
We haven't done that yet.
Okay. And how many continuants are they allowed or can they request? Like, how long can they drag this out really?
So they've, they've asked for, and actually the board asked for this already, that to extend it to the end of December for right now. So the time to act for it is December. I think it's, I'll have to double check. But at this point, they would have to continue to ask for requests, extensions, and then the board would have to grant it beyond the December. Otherwise, actual need to be taken. So it's not, I will say this, it's not unusual for these things to go months, you know, it's not.
Yeah. And I think as we discussed at our last public hearing was coming in from, is it Lake Shore Drive?
Yeah.
Yeah, coming in from Lake Shore Drive.
Priscilla Lake Shore.
It was not, not feasible with emergency vehicles without significant grading and, and altering the alignment of that, the vertical alignment of that road, which then impacted the abutters along there. And so, you know, we had asked them to, to look at other alternatives. I mean, you could come in from the other way. And, and so apparently, you know, that is something that they're, they're looking at, all the feasible options, you know, it's, you know, Rick is doing his job, is a good engineer for that, that developer, that homeowner and looking at all feasible options. And this would be one of them.
Can we find out any information about the last meeting with the other abutters, how that went?
This, that was the culmination of it. Look at the other option.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't, what, what meeting with the other abutters?
On site.
It wasn't with the.
Oh, on site. Oh, on site. Yeah. Yeah. It was really just to.
Oh, that. Oh, with the abut, that, there was a private, they met with the abutter side.
Right. But I believe there were board members that were there as well. No, that was the workshop you guys did with them.
Yeah.
With the fire.
DPW Fire.
We did have a, we did have a private workshop with, with DPW Fire. Chris and myself were there and, and the, the property owner and the engineer.
The abutters weren't at that.
The abutters weren't there at that meeting.
No, I know, but I'm sorry. I was calling them, I guess, the abutters.
Okay, yeah. So we did have a private meeting on that. That, that's a private, was a private meeting.
Mike Ferreira, 30, Hunter Ave. So that meeting that you're talking about, that did not include the property owners at 66 Lake Shore?
66, which, which.
That's, that's at the bottom.
The corner of the daycare.
No, it did not. No.
No, because the meeting with the 66 Lake Shore, the developer and their engineer that was 66 Lake Shore, and they raised objections to coming off of Lake Shore Drive.
Right.
So then that subsequent meeting was like, well, then you have to look at other all terms potentially and see what happens.
Because a 24-foot roadway is going to go right into their driveway from the center line of where the road is now.
So they're looking at.
Yeah.
They're not looking to connect to the Lake Shore Drive, the applicant. They're looking to come in to provide the necessary means to get access to their property, to develop the lot, but not continue on.
So that's, that's my next question. So now the intent, maybe after exploration of whatever they need to look at, is going to piggyback on what's already happened up at the end of Hunter and pick up the road improvement from the end of the 75-foot Hammerhead to go down into that gully, up to the crown of the road, and then back down again to where the intended driveway is supposed to be, which was just a little bit up MacArthur on the Lake Shore side from where the driveway is for 66 Lake Shore.
I mean, we can't really comment on that. We asked them to look at all available options coming from that direction. That's why they're going through the effort of spending the money on the survey and doing all the additional work.
That would also bring the utilities down, I would imagine.
That's on them to design and figure out.
So the utility, if it stays as a private way, they, that would be up to them to bring whatever utilities they needed down for that.
Well, the builder up at 10 MacArthur has to bring the utilities up Hunter to get.
So he, he is required to bring the utilities up there because that is good, that Hammerhead is going to be accepted by the town. So because of that, that's that higher bar that is going to be go through street acceptance. So that's a really high bar. So he had to bring all those utilities up there. That's why that fire hydrant's there and so on.
Sure.
If, if this stays a private way, if MacArthur stays a private way, then, then it's, it's not that same bar. I mean, he'll have to bring whatever utilities he's needed down to the property, but not, it's just different.
Well, only water and.
He'll have to have water.
Water and electric.
Yeah.
But this goes back to Kevin's question, whether it's going to be a finished paved road picked up at the 75-foot Hammerhead to get down to that property or some kind of dirt, sub base, whatever.
Well, that'll be something that, you know, we'll have to see what is presented in the plan and what those improvements are for that road, if it's not going to be a, a street accepted road. You know, this is where we went back. That's what, the, the private meeting was, was with the, the town and it was more about the safety concerns of what could be built and, and, and the option, the viable options and discuss that. Then they could go back and to the drawing board and, and it's not a full go back to the drawing board, but basically go back and, and look at, okay, what are my options? How can we do this? I mean, do we need to change the site? You know, is, is there a better way to reconstruct or to, to change the layout of the site to make this work? Whatever. So that's what that, that meeting was about with, it was more about the, the safety, town safety. That's why DPW Fire was there.
So they would need to come up with a proposal to get from the Hammerhead down to the property at Three MacArthur with public safety.
Yep.
Measurements in place.
Yep.
Correct. For both grade and ability to turn around.
Yep.
That's right.
All right. And again, everybody's aware of the letter in 2005 from Remo Vito, I assume, that that road should have been abandoned. We already know that, but it wasn't. It's for public safety reasons. It's not a drivable road.
You're right. The way it stands right now, it is not drivable. And they would, and this is where coming in from Lake Shore is not a viable option.
Sure. Coming in from Hunter is not really viable either.
It could possibly, it's, it could possibly be that way with, with some improvements. It's possible.
It would be a lot of improvements.
Yeah. Well, that's why we're like, well, you know, it's, this. Yeah. Put it together and see if it makes sense.
I mean, MacArthur Ave at the end of the Hammerhead right now is barely 10 feet wide. It's still basically a cow path.
Yep. So.
I have a question.
Microphone. Yeah, microphone.
Can you state your name and address?
No, you don't have to touch anything, just talk.
I'm sorry, Cindy Martin, 69 Priscilla Ave. My question is, I understand that this is all just about the road going in. Are we ever gonna get to the part where it's gonna affect the abutters' properties? As far as my concern is my well and the drainage that's gonna come down off of his plot, because I'm right behind it. And he, and the fact that he's gonna put the house 25 feet from my house, like on top of my house. Is that ever gonna be discussed or?
It, it will be once we see, once we see the site plan, I mean, we haven't seen that yet.
Okay, once, once a, a road is approved, then the next steps are?
No, seeing the plan is the next thing. We'd have to see the plan and understand all of that stuff. There's no road approval that'll happen before that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So your, your concerns and comments will be part of that process, that plan?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're, we're not there yet, it's, we, we haven't seen a viable option yet to, a safe, a safe option to get to that property.
Yeah.
Because I mean, I'm all about, I don't wanna create more problems, you know, we already have a lot of special situations in town that are kind of grandfathered in, so I don't wanna create another one. So I wanna make sure that we can get these emergency vehicles to this, to this property and that there is a viable road to get there. It may not be a street-accepted road, but it is a private road that meets the standards, you know, for public safety. And if we can get to that, then let's, then we'll start looking at, okay, well, let's look at that site plan and what you're trying to, and how does it impact the abutters? Yeah. So we're not there yet, but we will, we'll get there.
And with regards to the well, the Conservation Commission will be involved in that as well as Board of Health and all of that.
So the well will be more Board of Health in this case, because there is no wetland, no involvement with them.
Yeah, that's true, they're not close enough to the lake.
Yeah, they're not.
Do we anticipate this exploration to be done before the November meeting? Whatever survey needs to be done?
Don't know.
I would, I mean, we do have Rick on, on the phone, we could ask him what, what the anticipated schedule is.
This would go back to Lori's question a little while ago, like how open-ended is this continuance? Because if it doesn't get done before the November meeting, then it gets pushed out to another meeting. So again, like how open-ended is this? When do we draw a line and say, you've had your chance?
I mean, that's, that's, I, I don't feel we're there yet. You know, I feel that they, I don't know if legally we can extend this indefinitely, I don't think that that's an option. And I wouldn't want to do that, I would wanna get closure on this for everybody involved and, but I don't feel that, I've seen all the options that could be possibly explored and, and those, you know, all those options, different options come at a cost. The, the homeowner and the developer of all, they're still willing to make that investment, they feel it's still viable. So they're still moving forward with, with the survey to see if they could come in from Hunter. I think once we get that and, and if that doesn't bear any fruit, well, then that's a different story. Because coming in from Priscilla Lake Shore, I just don't see that working. That's just my opinion, but I just don't see a viable, safe option for that. Hunter is, is the, the other option, so let's see if they can put something together.
Yeah, in my experience, I've, I'm hard pressed to think that you're gonna get a survey and a site plan between now and November's meeting. That's just, that's hardly feasible.
It's possible, but we do.
Possible, but it's just not likely. So I think we're already talking about pushing this out to December or whenever the next meeting is after that.
And that's, and that's very possible too. We just would, we would prefer to just push it out one month to kind of keep them going, you know, we don't wanna give them two months. You know, let's push it out next month and, and if, and if questions like this come up, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about these again next, next month.
So in terms of the, the statutory timeframe has gone by. Right now, we're in a mutual extension of time to act between the town and the applicant. The extension goes to January of 2024, the present extension that's on file. If through this process that gets to a point where no new information can be had and a decision needs to be made, then those things happen within that timeframe. So you might say, well, this is it, we can't, we can't go any further. But they're really getting more information right now and evaluating and then that point will come.
So when would your cutoff be to put this on the November agenda? Like, what do you need in hand and when?
So I think, just as a.
Decisions being made tonight.
Yeah, so typical practice that the board has done in the past, it's up to the board. So you could say, well, they're not really gonna be ready in November and put it on December right now. You could do that.
Right.
But I think the typically the boards that go on month to month to see if anything comes in. For example, if something does come in, you can act on it as opposed to waiting December, you know, to put it on December meeting and then you gotta wait till December. So it's kind of a, it's a judgment call.
My point is if you get site plans two or three days before the meeting, that's hardly enough time to digest what you folks wanna look at before.
And that might be when we ask for a continuance to December.
Right, right.
And we've done that in the past as well.
Yeah, no, 100%, like it might, they might not have anything and there's not enough time to act on.
And I don't wanna paint the negative picture, but if it comes time to, you know, election period and all of that stuff and changes are made on the board, we might have to close the hearing and reopen it again as well. And so that would add additional time to it as well. So there's, there's ways, there's means of.
So that case, that's a, just to clarify.
Yeah, please.
They only need, you only need three members for this, so it's not like a super majority, so that.
That shouldn't come into play in this case, perfect.
But that's not till May anyway, but, but nevertheless. The point is, your point is taken that you want time, you want time to look at as, as an abutter and the board will want time to look at as well, so.
I, I mean, 10 MacArthur's been given an extension of the last meeting to June 30th of next year. That'll be two years of construction. It's maddening, it's ludicrous that abutters have to essentially have a construction site abutting them for two years for a house.
Yep, I, I, I'm aware of that, that's right, it's tough.
Just for clarification, they wanna come down through Hunter. Are they looking to come down in stopping at 3 MacArthur or continuing to Lake Shore? What, where does that piece of Lake Shore, what happens to that piece there?
So they're looking at stopping, that's, that is because of, for, again, for public safety.
Correct.
Uh, because if you were to continue down, then the, this, the vertical grade of the road is not suitable for emergency vehicles.
Right.
So that, that would be something that they would, they would need to stop then at 3 MacArthur.
So I've seen where they wanna put the entrance of 3 MacArthur, the driveway, anyway, from a previous plan, I have it somewhere. So for a, any emergency vehicle coming down Hunter, right? Where are they turning around at 3 MacArthur at that driveway?
I mean, this, this plan doesn't make sense for us to look at because this might be completely different.
That's right.
When we review it, the entrance might be in a different location when they come back to us.
They'd have to wait for the new site plan.
Right.
They might move, the house might be in a different spot, the driveway might be in a different spot because now you're coming in from a different.
So we're not basing it on that at all?
You can't, no.
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 It's complete drawing board at this point.
Okay, okay.
But we will, we will, you know, ha, there will be a requirement that there, there will need to be a suitable turnaround.
Correct.
For, for emergency vehicles.
That's just not what I'm, I can picture there at all, but, okay.
So I don't, I don't know what that would look like, a Hammerhead or a cul-de-sac or something.
I think the question is what stops them from just continuing down and using the part that we don't want them to use.
Yeah, so the, and that's my concern too. So what Eric is saying is, you know, what's to stop people from continuing down? So you've got this, we'll, we'll call it a non, let's just say there's a scenario where it's not an improved road or it's not a town-accepted road, but it is an improved private way. Uh, and it meets those requirements of a private way, but it then stops and it turns into what's there now, existing, which is really just a, kind of a gravelly dirt path. I know that you would, say you improve, what, three-fourths of it, two-thirds of it, and now you got this little section, what's to stop people from driving on it, right? So that would be something we did during the planning process, we would, we'd put in some requirements that they would have to put up some sort of a barrier there to, to stop that.
And deal with the water runoff, that's an issue there now.
Right, and to deal with all the, you know.
But for some of that, they'd need support from the abutters to do some of that as well because they have access and right-of-way to that road as well.
So the other piece is that we do have, those are the objectives to do all those things, but we also have to be aware of, um, private property owners have the rights to. So I mean, and you.
All of.
You're included.
Pretty much all of you, yeah.
Yeah, so you're included, so whatever needs to be done, it has to be as a bundled package, if you will.
Yeah, and for what it's worth, I, I want you all to understand that we are affording them the same allowances that we would afford any one of you that would come in front of this board and request similar. And so, you know, there's no special treatment or anything like that. If one of you were gonna do similar to your properties, we would afford you the same rights.
I think that's, that's really well said, I mean, it's, it's, right now, we're still receiving or we're awaiting new information, so, you know, I don't wanna say no yet and, and, but. I think that's really well said, Chris, it's like, we're, we're trying to be very fair and impartial and we would do this for anybody and, and so until we've exhausted those efforts, now, we're not gonna go on forever, like, we found out that this is only extended through January. But I, I think we will have a clear direction by then, definitely, of whether this can, whether a feasible option can be obtained.
I had objections to the other end of the road and it really got brushed under the rug immediately. I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, we're here and we're gonna have a say in what's happening from the Hammerhead on down. But I didn't really get that luxury two years ago when we were voted, when you, well, you weren't here, but when they were voting on that up there. So I, how does that happen?
I mean, I kind of take that a little personally, I was on the board during that time and I remember your testimony and I remember taking it under consideration. But all things, you know, concluded to the fact that at that time, we thought it made sense for us to continue with allowing that build to happen.
Yeah, and, well, since you brought it up, I specifically asked for you to do a site visit and it was immediately shot down. Nobody was interested in it.
I don't.
I've done site visits before it was approved.
Yeah.
Sure.
I'd, I'd have to go back to understand that. I know I didn't do one, so I'll be honest and open about that.
I asked for the board to come out because at the time, something was going on down on Pond, Pond Street and the board was unanimously getting together to go down and site visit that.
So I, I know we as a board did not do an official site visit, because if we get more than a.
More than three.
More than three, it's a.
Or more than two, it's.
So I know I personally went out there and looked at it, um, and I don't recall if any of the other board members did or not, but.
No, but, yeah, I mean.
And that's, yeah, I, I mean, I realize, I mean, that's really not part of the discussion tonight.
Are you talking about up in, where I'm talking about, are you talking about the Pond Street thing I just referenced?
I'm talking about, you're talking about at the end of Hunter Ave.
Yeah, yeah, 10 MacArthur.
I've been up there a few times before, before that construction.
And there's a lot of times where we ask Rich to go out to sites and provide us photographs and reports from a lot of these projects as well. And so I wouldn't be surprised if Rich hadn't done that for us in this instance as well. But again, that's, that's all publicly documented, we'd have to just do the research to understand it.
Well, I sent you another email this morning, bringing you up to date on what's going on up there, so. We're not going on up there.
Okay, well, that's a topic for, that's not part of this public hearing, yeah.
But now we're talking about coming down to 3 MacArthur from up there, so we're pig, we're piggybacking on this other project. It will affect the abutters, just like.
You are correct. Yes, you are correct, yes. Any other comments? Did we wanna, did Rick wanna speak? No?
Okay.
So.
November 6th.
So we're looking to, do we?
Motion for continuance to, of 3 MacArthur Avenue to November 6th, 2023 at?
Eight.
8:00 PM.
8:00 PM.
But we've got the, uh, the master plan at 7:00.
Let's do 8:15, just in case.
That sounds all right.
Sure. Okay.
8:15?
Yep.
Okay, so motion to move, uh, motion to continue 3 MacArthur Ave to November 6th, 2023 at 8:15 PM.
The second? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Just so you know that we changed our meeting, it's a, that's a Monday night.
Because town meeting is our normal Tuesday night, so. It's a week earlier and on a Monday.
Yeah.
All right, so we have new business, 19 Charter Drive.
Yep, they're not ready to come in, so they've requested, um, that discussion to the 6th. Their temporary occupancy expires on the 13th of November, so.
Okay. Then next is 15 Lincoln Road, Next Grid Solar Project, I did see Nate, yep, Nate's still on the call.
Nathan is there.
So their temporary occupancy permit expires on the 17th, so that's a week from today. All right, Nate, get us up to speed, so where are you at?
Sure, so at our last hearing, um, I gave the board an update kind of on, on what had been done last spring and what we were planning to do, which was the additional overseeding, um, this fall. During that meeting, the board had requested that we submit photo documentation, um, of the work that kind of what was done and, and was being done after the meeting that we had. We submitted that, uh, I believe on September 28th in a PDF document. I'm happy to share my screen and show it if members of the board have not seen it.
I've seen it.
It's in their shared, so hopefully you'll.
Yeah, we, we've seen it, plus it's in our shared folder, yeah.
Okay, um, so what that, what that documented was the additional loom and seeding that was done last spring. I, we shared some photos of kind of the grow-in as of early September. We did another round of overseeding on September 11th and we went back to the site, I believe it was on the 23rd, to take some additional photos of kind of how that, that was growing in as well.
Okay. Rich is just putting up the, or Rich or Bessie, one of them is putting it up.
I've got the.
On the screen in, in here, in the room, but.
In the room.
Yes, yes.
It's not on Zoom, but, um, so we're just looking at that.
Sure.
So, and if I recall correctly, the only outstanding item was this, this loam and seed piece, right? It's been so long this has been going on, I just wanna.
So there's really three items they took care of, Nathan sent a letter, the, the flare dam was put on the drainage line.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
That was taken care of. In, in conjunction with the loam and seed and that gravel area was reduced back from what was on site.
Right.
And so those were, that's it.
That's it.
And then the grass to, to see that's grown.
Yep, we are still working with the Conservation Commission. We, we had submitted the request for certificate of compliance. However, in working with Caitlin, there, there's, I guess, three previous, uh, orders that were never closed. Not, not, you know, they weren't permits pulled by Next Grid, so we're working with her on getting those, uh, closed out. We do have the document from, and, and again, these are more conservation issues, but, uh, we are scheduled for the November hearing to finalize the full closeout with conservation. And then the, the last item, we just need to work out with the, the building department, is the field, uh, field testing to get the UL listing on the battery storage system. But outside of that, all of our, our construction work is complete.
Okay.
Yep, I don't have any questions.
I'm good.
I'm so glad to see grass growing.
I really like that point of view hydroseeding.
Yeah, the hydroseed shot sold me.
Yeah, it was a video, but I couldn't put that in a PDF, so I did.
I appreciate it, thank you so much and I really appreciate you working with us on this.
All right, so.
Everybody's happy.
Yeah.
Satisfied.
Good.
Then two things. One would be to vote to recommend a permit CO in terms of the site.
Okay.
And then, then you can vote to release the bond that we're holding, so we can.
Yep.
Do you have the value of the bond?
Twenty-five thousand?
Twenty-five thousand.
One year, twenty-five. I don't recall if I may, but it's, it's in that ballpark here.
It shows twenty-five.
Twenty-five rings a bell, but Betsy's looking it up. Okay, so the first motion, looking to entertain a motion to issue the permanent occupancy and CO for 15 Lincoln Road Next Grid Solar Project.
So.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So that is passed. And Betsy's looking up the bond. We could just say up to twenty-five thousand. I know it's no more than that.
I probably have it in my notes here somewhere.
So while Betsy's looking that up, Nathan, what, so everything's wrapped up at Meeting House, right? That's all.
That, that project is all closed, correct?
And so then you're going to, you're working on getting this all wrapped up, so then that's it for you with the town, except for if you're doing the Pond Street one.
That's correct.
Okay.
You will, you will likely have the pleasure of seeing my face again.
Anything you can share with us on timing for that, when that would start?
So as part of the final lease negotiations, which I was not part of, but that Next Grid worked out with the town, there was some back and forth on the original road that was proposed. So BSC Group is working on an amendment, and a, basically a construction document to avoid the plan amendment after the fact, like what happened at 15 Lincoln. So there'll probably be a plan in front of you just to review what will ultimately be constructed, but we're, we're hoping to break ground before the end of the year. If timing doesn't work out, it will certainly, it'll be in quarter one of 2024.
At our December 5 meeting, I wrote $25,000 bond.
Okay, that's what I, that's what stuck in my head was $25,000.
Fantastic.
Well, let's move forward with that. So entertain a motion to release the bond in the sum of $25,000 for the 15 Lincoln Road Next Grid Solar Project.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Nathan.
Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Yep, have a good evening, Nathan.
Bye now.
Seven Juniper.
Seven Juniper, you have a draft decision. I did change the, the, the dates.
Dates, right?
Yeah, the one I printed with, to have you sign. It's a clean one with the, with the correct dates.
Okay. I'm good with that. Anybody else have any? Want to look at the dates? All right, so we will, so we need to, we did not, at our last meeting, we did not approve the.
You just closed the public hearing.
We closed the public hearing. We did not approve the decision, so unless there's any other comments, we do need to approve that. Any other comments? All right, so entertain a motion to approve the decision as, for the special permit application just for Seven Juniper Lane. With the one exception of the dates being updated in our printed packet here.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we will sign that. Meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for September 12th, it's printed.
Do we have a second?
So moved. Second.
Second. He made the motion, he made the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Town planner updates.
The tentative date would be November 21st, 2023, for update on the town center ways were.
So that'd be a special.
It would be a select board meeting.
It would be a select board meeting, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, um, but Zoom hybrid.
You can Zoom if you like, yes. Either or. Yes, it is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
Yeah. Rich.
That's not nice.
Okay, 7:00 PM, I'm seeing.
Oh, okay. Well, the day of technology, you know, you can.
I know, I might be in a car picking up my kid from the airport, but that's okay. I'll, I'll be there.
All right. So that's the.
I get it.
That's the date. Second item is we do need to start to turn our attention to drafting the housing choice language for town meeting.
For spring.
For the spring. The executive, which was the Department of Housing and Community Development, is now the Executive Office of Housing Livable Communities, does need to review the bylaw in addition to the Attorney General in order for it to be approved. That's the, you know, obviously has to be voted on by the town meeting, but it goes through a review process through their office as well as the Attorney General. What they're offering to cities and towns is to review them before they go to town meeting, to make sure that if you, it's something that you put forth before town meeting, that if it gets voted, they'll approve it. I suppose, you know, you could end up with something that's not meet the guidance. So they offer that, which makes sense. There's a 90-day review window, so our, typically, the warrant opens up in January and closes the February, beginning of February. You have had public hearings in March, and then, then keep it on the track, so that way advisory and select board and so forth could take a look at it. So what I'm going with that is we need to start sitting down for drafting the language.
Start in December.
So if you want to, it, it could be type of me that you could do it on Zoom if you want, it's up to you, you know, but I'll ask you to check your schedules and see what you think.
So you want to do this as a separate meeting outside of our normal planning board meetings? Is that what you're thinking about?
Don't we also have help with that?
Not with the.
Consultant on the.
No, not with the drafting of the language.
No, I remember asking that question, and we could get help if we were willing to pay for that. That would be added service.
We still had some.
No, that, that that technical assistance is done in terms of that grant.
I thought that we kept getting delayed, or we were waiting for some more guidance, and then they were going to update us on what the new.
They did.
Guidance was.
Well, they did do, they had put out additional guidance in terms of mixed use. Is that the one you're referring to? Yeah, so we can.
I think we've heard from them, though.
Huh?
I think we've heard from them since then.
Not from the consultant, but I have heard from housing livable communities. So the, just a bridge version of this, or concise version of it, but.
Bridge.
Bridge, concise, however you want to call it. Ours might not qualify.
Okay.
Essentially. And one of the reasons I'm wait, I'm waiting to, I went to a workshop, and they're going to send out the slides to, to let everybody know what the criteria are. I do remember in the workshop that one, the criteria is that for mixed use, you cannot require minimum, so no parking for the residential units. So basically, it has to be just parking for a commercial.
I do remember there was some conflicts there, yeah.
Yeah.
We have some areas where.
We have now.
And that's in the B1.
In the B1. I, I do want to let you know, though, I'm making an effort to have what we have, hopefully, potentially comply, because we do have some caveats to that, like you can waive some parking, and so I put that in, I'm waiting to hear back, so we might, we might get, I'm hoping we might get some. It doesn't reduce the area, just the only thing what it does is allows you to credit that area that's zone mixed use to go get your overall unit capacity number, so. So ours is 750, it could go drop down, but.
Was there also a part of that where we didn't comply because of our affordable housing ratios?
Yeah, that's, that's another part of it. That's a big part of it, actually.
That's a big part of it.
Big part of it. So I went back and looked at our action plan, so in the MBT action plan, we said either nay of 2024 or November of 20, to give ourselves a buffer. We were thinking, at the time, if we have issues, it'd be nice to have another town meeting before the deadline of December. So I've, I'm speaking with Justin and Todd to see if we, I did put in for a grant for that request, because it's about $20,000, to hire a third party to do that economic analysis. It's getting tight time-wise, so I asked if we might be able to have a transfer from the town to cover it, because we need to have that done, and we would like to be able to do this as a package. And so it's getting a little bit tight here. I'm a little concerned about the timing, but that's another piece. Yes, we don't comply, so we need to be able to either change our bylaw to match housing choice, or demonstrate that our bylaw works, and they can validate it through an economic analysis. So we're, I will say that we do have an out, an alternative, which we really don't want to do, I think. Would be, we could go to November on the housing, on the inclusionary piece, so I'll keep you posted, but long story short, I think we need to start drafting, so if you look at your, I don't know, the December might work. Depends what you want to do in terms of, like, if you maybe wanted to do master plan as separate and not part of your regularly December planning board meeting.
So no, we had talked about keeping master plan separate. November didn't work out that way.
Yeah.
So that, so because of the town meeting.
Yes.
And I'm fine with that, but I, I like the idea of having the master plan separate.
So then, so then we can start dra, then the goal would be to start drafting on the 12th, have stuff ready for the 12th to start the process.
Let's do that as part of our normal planning board.
And in addition to that, I was talking to Tom Harrington, Town Council. What he suggested was, I think it's a really good idea, is they would attend the meeting as we're in the drafting process.
Okay.
Because we were just talking about a little bit, just with the zoning you just did tonight, that going forward, it might not be a bad idea when we're working on new zoning and we're in the concept stage and drafting, for them to attend to get the essence of what the board's looking for, as for them to aid in the review, which ultimately would, should make it a better product, because we've already, they're already in on the drafting process, so. So I'm going to let them know that we'll target the 12th of December then.
Okay.
And that was it for my updates.
Okay.
I know you did have a different, so in terms of, we have put out a general broadcast for volunteers.
Yep.
Which covers everything, actually. It's not just the planning board. So, which is associate planning board member.
Yes, we, we hadn't talked about it in a while, and all of a sudden, over the weekend, that's why I sent you all an email over the weekend, it's like, hey, we need to bring this back up.
It's been out there.
I've mentioned it a couple times to people that are like, oh, yeah, I really would love to get more interested in town politics. I'm like, hey, this, here's your opportunity.
So any of you that are watching this, if you're interested in being an associate member, we're, we're looking.
And I believe it was covered in the town newsletter, it just went out too, last week. It's on the town website too. And it wasn't just applicable to the planning board. There's a bunch of volunteers needed, so. All right, that's it for me.
Okay. No, you have a question? I had something under new business.
Good.
So do we, do we, um, do, or is everything going okay out there at 10 MacArthur? Do we need to have, do we need to have a meeting with them? Do we need to ask them to join our next planning board meeting in November?
Oh.
As construction, I guess my, let me rephrase my, has construction continued to progress, or has it been stalled? And if it hasn't progressed, do we, would it be advisable to have him attend our planning board meeting to get a status update?
Let's take a look. I think out there, he was DAK filling.
Okay.
The foundation, so, I mean, I know it's certainly not going as quickly as, uh.
It's not quickly as everybody would like. I get that, but as long as construction is moving and it's.
Let's take a peek.
Efficient manner.
We might, we'll give a consideration for, for November, because I appreciate the slower, the frustration of the slow pace.
Yeah. Yep, okay.
I'd love to have it done tomorrow. It'd be great.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
You know.
I agree.
Because I've put some effort time in with this too, to try to keep things moving along, but.
Yep.
Take a peek.
Okay. That's all.
That wasn't what you had, though, right?
No, I thought at one point there was discussion of traffic plan presentation in conjunction with the MAPC thing tonight.
Yeah, so based on where we're at, the.
They talked about traffic, but we didn't see any data or.
Yeah, no, they just ran general numbers to an IT trip, not a.
Right, we, we had a study, right?
Yeah, but we're not, we're not to the point to kind of enter, input some of these outcomes yet.
Because it would be based on the scenario that we're looking at most closely.
They have done existing traffic count data, so that, that data is there, but not ready to plug it into the model yet.
Right. So a baseline data for once we get a mod, once we have a viable.
Which we now have, like, five options, essentially.
The actual, as, as found conditions.
Yeah, no, it wasn't, it was separate company now. Well, the decision was, we need to get a little further along before it makes sense to plug in traffic.
Yeah.
Would, would.
It wouldn't necessarily be relevant.
What do you mean, like a traffic study? Like a formal traffic study, or?
So they have, we hired a traffic engineering company to do traffic data counts and put together a traffic model. And then based on the alternatives, in terms of what option could come out of it, they would plug in the traffic associated with that based on existing counts to kind of give a better profile in terms of the traffic impact.
Got you.
More detail than what Josh had done. But until we get further along, I think it, we still, you still get a presentation.
Yeah, I was saying, will there be a presentation or a report at some point?
Um, no.
I mean, we've got to get some sort of data.
There'll be, there'll be a report and presentation.
And even based on the scenario, it could be different based on how they build out that scenario as well, and what that traffic flow looks like inside.
Yeah, because the assisted living would be very different than light industrial.
Exactly.
Or light warehouses or whatever.
Or versus 400, you know, housing units.
Right.
With 16 different cul-de-sacs.
Right.
Or a bus system that goes straight to the, the train station.
Yes, because it.
Does the scope work for that solar farm? The projecting uses, or is it just the existing conditions that could later be built upon?
It was existing conditions plus plugging in a development scenario.
But we don't have the development scenario yet, yeah.
Right.
Can't believe nobody's talking about a monorail downtown.
A monorail, I want a trolley.
Bring Disney up here.
We've got that company in town that's got those overhead pods.
Didn't we do the pod things with the island lighting?
Yeah, it just seems to be sitting there, it's not moving, though.
I mean, just, you can connect the two, at least.
Connect the two, yeah, yeah.
Go from Southwood to, to island lighting.
I think, Gary, we start with sidewalks or paths before we get to your monorail.
I was just making a simple reference.
Talking about a sidewalk on U-Street, is that, is that what we want?
No, no.
No, no sidewalk on U-Street?
Josh's creative solution, where we have paths.
Yeah, paths.
Okay.
Good.
That's, that's all I had. So next meeting is not our normal.
Not on a Tuesday.
It's not our normal cadence. It's on a Monday, and it's a week earlier, so it's the 6th. We do then have town meeting on the.
14th.
14th, Tuesday, the 14th, and then we'll be back to our normal schedule. Uh, and then we'll be back to our normal schedule, uh, in December.
And town meeting is which, it's the sixteenth?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth. And so we have, we're doing the wastewater at the select board meeting on November twenty first. We need to, uh, I'll need to attend
Well, to go to advisory next week.
Yeah, I'll have to attend advisory next week. Yeah.
Yeah. I'll be there.
Yep.
Um, but yes, the seventeen.
So we'll have the four articles for advisory, the, the Shire Drive.
Mm hmm.
The
Parking that you did back in
I won't be here for town meeting again.
We did the
August?
The parking public hearing.
It was the end of August, right? The parking.
The parking, yeah, yeah.
And then these two.
And then these two.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any update on the funding from Congressman Ockingkloss wastewater related?
Well, you've been probably following the news, right?
Uh, yes.
On the national level.
Yes. So he has not been focused on it? Is that what you mean?
No, um, they've got bigger problems there at the moment. So, I mean, he thought with, which he's a good forecaster, that, uh, probably be a challenge to see anything this fall because of the, what's going on in the, with the House representative. It's not dead by any means, but
Yeah. He put in for it, but
No updates. Okay.
But not a, not a strong likelihood we're going to see a vote out of it through the
It's not dead though, so that's
No, it's still alive. It's just that not as optimistic because he was early in the year in terms of the House
I was hoping it got approved before all of that. That would have been
No, it was part of that. So
Oh.
It was
Okay.
It was package come forward, but it's still alive. It's not now maybe when we get to November, maybe we might have a little more of an update. I don't know. Let's see.
Let's see.
Okay.
All right. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I thought you had another question.